...to order if you have a cellphone, if you would just please sign on your cellphone. Thank you. We called the meeting, our May fourteenth meeting to order is six o'clock Monday night. And at this time, I'm going to ask Councilman Bubba to please lead the discussion.
Let's pray. Oh, we praise your holy name. We are in awe of all the things you've done for us and blessings you have put upon us. What we do with this now is we do business of the county, give us wisdom and there things may be glorified.
Would we stand for political allegiance?
Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for April ninth, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-third, thirtieth, and May third. Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
No.
Is there any discussion or amendments? If not, we'll call for the vote at this time. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And as Chairman, vote yes. Are there any reports from the county officials? Now at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Your course.
I just want to say just briefly, I appreciated the condolences and the prayers and so and so forth for the passing of my sister, Colleen Hendricks about three weeks ago. It meant a lot to know that our family was in your comments.
That's your report.
All right. This time I'd like to note for a public hearing, this hearing is on ordinance number zero-one dash one-eight, an ordinance to repeal Chapter twelve floods, Article two flood damage prevention, section twelve dash thirty-one through section twelve dash one fifty-two of the Code of Ordinance for Saluda County, South Carolina. If there's no one to speak, we'll close the public hearing. All right. I have number two, open the public hearing on ordinance number zero-two dash eighteen, an ordinance adopting flood damage prevention to be codified in Chapter twelve floods, Article two flood damage prevention of the Code of Ordinance for Saluda County, South Carolina. Close public hearing. This time we're going to go through the old business. I'd like to entertain a motion for the third reading of ordinance zero-one dash eighteen, an ordinance to repeal Chapter twelve floods, Article two flood damage prevention, section twelve dash thirty-one through section twelve dash one fifty-two of the Code of Ordinance for Saluda County, South Carolina. Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
And district four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And then I, as Chairman, vote yes. I'd like to entertain a motion for the third reading on ordinance number zero-two dash eighteen, an ordinance adopting flood damage prevention to be codified in Chapter twelve floods, Article two flood damage prevention of the Code of Ordinance for Saluda County, South Carolina. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
And just for information, the thirty-dollar flood permit fee and the thirty-dollar, thirty, that thirty-dollar flood verification fee will remain the same rates for this. So at this time, I'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, as Chairman, vote yes. This time I'll entertain a motion for a second reading on ordinance number zero-three dash eighteen, an ordinance to provide appropriation for the fiscal year beginning July first two thousand eighteen for educational and school purposes in School District One of Saluda County, South Carolina, to provide for the levy of taxes and the taxable property in School District One, to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming into the school district during the fiscal year, to establish a reserve account and provide that all funds in excess of the county appropriation be paid into the reserve account. Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
At Saluda County Council, we shall determine and establish a tax of sufficient millage to support the seven million, sixty-four thousand, four hundred dollars minus revenues and credits reflected on tax receipts and fee of property tax relief, home state exemption, tier-three property tax relief, merchant inventory, manufacturer's depreciation, motor carrier for a net amount of four million, five hundred, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred from applicable tax. At this time, we'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, as Chairman, vote yes. This time I'll entertain a motion for the second reading on ordinance number zero-four dash eighteen, an ordinance to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of Saluda County for the fiscal year commencing July first two thousand eighteen, to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable property in Saluda County for all county purposes for the fiscal year commencing July first two thousand eighteen, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for the, for other county purposes, to provide appropriations for the fiscal year commencing July first two thousand eighteen, and to provide for the certain fiscal and other matters relating to the county government. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. The amount for second reading for the county operating budget is fourteen million, two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine, and debt service on bonds is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-six and six cents, for a total amount of fourteen million, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and six cents. The difference in proposed expenditure and revenue is two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-eight. And that Piedmont Tech, Technical Colleges requesting two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-three for fiscal year eighteen and nineteen appropriation. They are funded through millage and are not included in the above figures. Call for a vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, as Chairman, vote yes. All right. Moving into new business, tonight I'd like to recognize Mr. Jason Phil, General Manager for Saluda County Water and Sewer Authority, for their request to acquire an easement on Saluda County, a partial number one-zero-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-three-eight, and to purchase a portion of Saluda County partial number zero-nine-nine dash zero-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-one-six. Mr. Phil.
Good evening. Hey, y'all, let me be on the agenda. If it's okay, I'd like to hand out some maps of the areas we're talking about. I'll get you one. I've got the last one here, I apologize. I have four maps here. I'd like to go through the first one first, and hopefully it's the most straightforward. What we're asking for on the first parcel, which ends in zero-three-eight, is an easement onto the property that y'all own, that we have a sewer enforcement behind. What we're trying to do this fall, we had a situation where AMICs needed to shut down for the week, and y'all had graciously given us a temporary access to place caustic, which helps lower our sewer pH and helps just enable the system run and operate properly out on Law Enforcement Boulevard. What we're looking to try to acquire with your help is a place where we can safely place caustic or any other sewer on an emergency basis, to try to help keep our system running up properly. The little circular area you're looking at is basically us asking to clear that area in the circled area and place a gravel drive to allow a tanker truck to be able to turn around and access one of our manholes. What we're proposing to do is simply on our existing easement, where we have a manhole, place a containment spill center area with sidewalls, just in case there was a small accident or a spillage. It would also have an eyewash station, but those would all be on our existing easement where our sewer line is currently. So what we're requesting is simply access to be able to clear that circular shape, which actually may end up being more like a teardrop shape when you look at the logistics of making an eighteen-wheeler turn around where it would be straight and then it has more curve towards the end of it. Just appreciate your consideration on that request. If y'all have any questions, please, I'm...
Have you spoken with Ed about this?
I've spoken with Ed, I've spoken with Josh Morton. I think this was actually supposed to be part of the Fire Academy, and I think both Ed and Josh are both open to this idea.
You agree with Josh?
Yep. All right, moving on. I have three pictures, and I set them up in going from close in to a little bit further out, and then almost a brain scheme effect. And this, I'm open to any questions you have. This can be as simple or as complex as y'all would like it to be. What we're looking to do is place our own wastewater treatment facility adjacent to Saluda CPW's wastewater treatment facility. What we have here, and it's somewhat difficult to see, but on the western side of where Saluda CPW is, is essentially a simplified layout of what a wastewater treatment facility would be, and that's actually sized for an eight NGD. What we're currently looking to build is a four NGD wastewater treatment facility. That would allow us access to grow. You can see further up toward, closer to the CPW elevated storage tank, we've left that open. We'd like to try to be good stewards and give a buffer, to make sure we can manage and maintain our buffer for a wastewater treatment plant. We are also currently talking with the town and with Saluda CPW about partnering together and finding ways that we can work together to try to potentially reuse some of what they have out there on that site. That's also why you see to the eastern side, we have a blank right now, that is, a large portion of it is covered with a flood plain, but there could be areas up on the higher section where we might be able to convince some of what we're trying to do right now. Again, we're looking to try, this is, if you flip to the second map, it's approximately twenty-point-four acres. Of that, a little over four acres is in the flood plain in that one section, so we're really talking about suitable, constructable area, about sixteen acres or so. The point of why we're trying to do this wastewater treatment facility is allowing our existing customers to grow. We currently have and use one-point-four million gallons a day of sewer. If we had to expand it as we stand right now, we would have to go back to the people that we transmit our sewer through, Penfield County Water and Sewer Authority, North Augusta, Dayton County PSA, and ask for additional sewer capacity. Those are all very cost prohibitive. Where we stand now is very cost prohibitive. What we try to do at SEWSA is think about keeping our biggest customers competitive and keeping all of our ratepayers cost down. In order to do this project, it is a big project, but we have analyzed and looked at the cost to debt ser and to run it ourselves, we will save over half a million dollars a year by doing it, even if it's on our own. If we can get CPW to partner with us, the savings for both of us go down, or increase for both of us. It also, as a four NGD plant, provides us with excess capacity in which to provide future industries or customers that need sewer service. Currently, as y'all know, with SE Pet Foods, we don't have any capacity that we could have sold them. Thankfully, they had enough room to be able to handle the sewer on their own site. This would allow us for future industries to be able to free up capacity well in excess of where we are right now. It also allows AMICs to grow as they are going to do. They're planning to grow at least twice as much as they are currently in the next ten years. And that makes sense, historically, they grow on a twelve-to-thirteen percent basis anyway.
What's your timetable on this project?
As quick as I can move it. I'm, I'm a busy man, but this is a great opportunity for us. We want to try to get funding for this this year.
So if you don't get this, if you don't save this land, this will really go public?
Correct. I would like to have this locked down. This is a key piece for us to be able to go to our funding agency and make sure that they understand how serious we are with this. This is one location, it is a good location for us. If you go back and look at some of these other maps, our sewer system currently goes north to south. What is advantageous for us is we can simply turn the pump stations around and go from south to north and turn all of the flow that's from the southern part and move it back towards Saluda. Hydraulically, it's actually easier because we're going downhill for the most part. It is also co-laid located right next to an existing wastewater treatment facility, which allows us to make sure that we're being good stewards of the environment, that we're trying to do things on the same site where we currently have a wastewater treatment plant, as opposed to finding someplace else outside of this area. It also sets up for CPW system to work with us and be customer of ours.
So are you asking for us to agree to let you purchase this the light? Okay, I haven't heard anything as far as number...
I'm, I'm here, and I'm, I'm here to introduce this as an idea. I'm here to have feedback. This is just a proposal, this is nothing in concrete. We can move or shape however this suits. I'm trying to...
So you're just asking for us to move forward, especially?
Correct.
Yeah, we're just checking in.
Yeah. Tonight, we're just receiving information because there are portions of this that we'll have to have readings, we'll have to discuss the financials on it.
That's good. I was making, I don't have no information, so...
Okay. Now, so you're, to understand, you're asking to acquire, it's like twenty-four acres, that's correct?
And that is negotiable, and that's not suitable to the county council, I can understand that. If you go to the first map of the three, that section that's in to the western side, that's approximately five acres, a little over five acres, and we can trim some of that down if we had to. I think it's, hopefully, the county council will see the benefit of selling the property to us to help market additional sewer capacity in the county.
So, say if this does work, and if there is a transfer of this property at some point, the access road that's going in there, is that the only one that you would need, or do you project something else?
I don't foresee any, no. I think that's the only one that we'd ever need.
And it's already there?
Yes.
I guess my question would be the section right behind Rowing Food, that's, how much is right there in that little block that...
Right, actually, we have nothing there right now. That would be...
Okay, that, what I'm, what you have marked here?
That's right.
How much is that?
How much of the area is that?
Right. Do you have that?
I don't have it, I could, I could remeasure it, but it's probably close to ten acres. Probably eight to ten acres, and half of that's in the flood plain.
Okay. One, who else got questions for Jason Phil? Michael?
Can I have any other questions? At this time, I look forward to hearing about future discussion.
Okay. How should I proceed with this? How, what can I do to try to, does this seem reasonable? Do I need to look at scaling back the size of it? Do I need to provide more information as to, who do I need to talk to about pricing for purchase of the property?
I think first, we need to decide, as the council probably, how we want to...
That's fair.
Move forward.
Sure.
Okay. Because again, I'm new at this. So I need direction on how to follow through with this.
Understood.
If there's no further questions, do you have any more information for us tonight?
I think that's enough for tonight. Thank y'all so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you. So as I said, we'll receive this as information tonight. A portion of this will need to be handled in executive session for the contract portion, and then also if we decide to proceed with it, there'll need to be three readings, so tonight is just for information. Right at this time, I'd like to recognize Finance Specialist Regina Turner for consideration to paint the main four public access areas in one stairwell of the courthouse.
Thank you. Um, we've got our request for quote from a list of qualified contractors, and TNT Complete Construction was our newest quote that we received in a total of eight thousand, eight-fifty-five. This is to include the public areas only, so, um, most of the upstairs area, and with the addition of some chair rail, because where the chairs are up there now have beat up the walls pretty bad upstairs. That's going to be funded with agreement from Ms. Sherri Coleman for three thousand, seven ninety-five to come from DSS court funds. So we would like to recommend that the county's portion of five thousand, sixty dollars be funded from the public building repair account.
We need to entertain a motion to paint the main four public access areas in one stairwell of the courthouse in an amount of five thousand, sixty dollars is quoted from TNT Complete Construction to be paid from the public building repair account, if you'll hold one second. Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
Right.
Or is there any discussion, any questions?
Question. What's the reason for the timing on this particular project?
Um, we had talked about it earlier, and we were just getting quotes, in case you wanted to include it in with budget funds next year, or if you wanted to go ahead and get that now.
Okay. The, now, the funds from, what was it, DSS? What funds were that? Will they still be available next year? The reason I ask is because, you know, we have a spending freeze on, going on right now, and I don't particularly feel comfortable with us spending money if we've asked all of our county departments to not spend money. So that's, just kind of thought of that going on.
We had put the quotes out at first of February. I had let the contractors know that this is not something that we're gonna be awarding in thirty days, it could be approached during budget, or it could be, which would be next year funded, or it could be approved now. So we can, if you wanted to postpone it for later, we could ask for them to update their quotes in case they have any changes, and bring that forward again.
I would personally prefer to defer to after, because we're still, you know, saying things, old scheme, we're still, it's out.
Any other questions? All right. This time then I'll call for a vote on the motion that was made. Let me re-read the motion. Motion is to paint the main four public access areas in one stairwell of the courthouse in an amount of five thousand, sixty dollars is quoted from TNT Complete Construction to be paid from the public building repair. And I'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
No.
District two, how do you vote?
No.
District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
No.
And I, as Chairman, vote no. So the motion has stood. All right. At this time, I'd recognize Emergency Management Director Josh Morton for consideration of GIS data charges.
Good evening. What I'm here about, if you've ever tried to use GPS in an insulin counter, you know that often does not end well. For example, if you put in the address for our office at one-eleven Law Enforcement Drive, which is out behind the tractor pole, you end up in the heights. So we definitely have, have sought for a long time of how exactly to go about getting this problem ready, and we were recently contacted by TomTom, actually, about getting our data so that they can correct the issue in their systems, and also, you know, we'd be able to provide it to some other GPS providers. Currently, there are two GIS layers that will be needed by these companies, property address layer and roads layer. The property address dataset consists of only the point on the map, the number, and the street name. No personal information's included with that, it's just the, the data from the point itself. The road dataset consists of a road name, the line segments and ranges, and speed limits, if we have those speed limits available. Currently, those two layers are something that we charge for. For our property address layer, we charge three hundred dollars. For our road layer, we charge five hundred dollars. Those costs are prohibitive for these companies, and the reason being, you know, you look and you say, well, that, that shouldn't be a whole lot of money to a large company. But whenever you multiply that by all of the counties in the United States, that would be a pretty hefty chunk of change. So what we are, we originally talked about providing it to those companies, you know, trying to do kind of an exception type thing, but then we kind of came to the phenomenon of how would we determine who would qualify for the data for free and who would have to pay for it? So what we came up with was simply to provide those two layers at no charge to any customers seeking that data. Now, to give you an idea of how much money that we would be losing on that, we have never sold our road data to anyone. We've never had a customer for that data. Since two thousand and twelve, when we first started selling data, we have had three customers purchase our address data, the last customer purchase at being in April of two thousand seventeen. So between the two layers, we've made a whopping nine hundred dollars in the past six years. So again, the, the reason that we're, we're asking to do this is simply to allow us to get that data out there so that we can correct the GPS data, you know, to try and make things a little easier on not only our citizens, but also people who are visiting the county, measure where this has been a problem for a long time. And that's all I've got. Any questions?
If you'll hold one for, one second, please. I'd like to entertain a motion... I'd like to entertain a motion to provide the following data layers to all GIS data users free of charge, GIS routes, center lines, to include address ranges, and E nine eleven address points. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any questions or discussion at this time?
I hope this helps us out, I hear all the time about how people, the people who sit in the first one I was working here, how they get lost.
Mason's tire department's right outside of Johnston, if you follow. And we have something delivered, they said, where are you?
We had to put signs on our driveway because it looks like it might have crossed Little Saluda River. It does not, and it tells me that the only way I can get home is to go down Long Road. I live just off of three seventy-eight, and we have people lined up out in our field because they think that they're going to be crossing Little Saluda River and connecting over to Long Road somewhere. It's not good.
I actually heard a story earlier in the week of a lady that lives in the Heights, who, when the tractor pull's happening, she actually sits in her front yard with handouts of maps and bottled water, and hands out to the people who come to her house looking for the tractor pull, so.
Well, this move was into the twenty-first century.
I sure hope so.
Wish you would hate to use our welcome committee, though, if you didn't know our boss. All right. Any further questions or discussion?
Given the experience that you've had in the past about how often you have sold this information, how seldom you have sold this information, what do you foresee for the future? Is all of this about to just become free to everyone? Are we missing an opportunity here?
Well, these two layers, really, unless you are doing something with GIS, your average citizen's not going to come in and ask for a copy of our road layer. You know, they're really wouldn't have a use for it, so. I don't see this as missing an opportunity. Kristy could probably answer that question a little better, but she didn't have any concerns about doing it. As far as, you know, missed revenue in the future or anything like that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Josh. If not, I'll call for a vote. District One, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I as Chairman vote yes. All right, at this time, I'll recognize again Emergency Management Director Josh Morton for the consideration to develop a request for proposal for, or of, a contract for the monitoring and maintenance of the county's access control and alarm systems.
All right, currently, as most of you are aware, we have security fire, access control systems in the majority of our facilities. Our contract that we currently have with, now it's ADT, they were Protection One before that ASG and before that RSH, is expiring in the next few weeks. And so what we are asking is permission to put out a request for proposals for the continued maintenance and monitoring of those various systems.
Entertain motion for staff to develop a request for proposal for a contract for monitoring, maintenance of the county's access control system, security, fire, alarm system, and camera system. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions at this time?
Yeah, last time, we had a pretty bad showing for this, right? We had one obvious. Can we broaden our search criteria? I think last time, we made it a little too specific, and we'd used this system with these type of devices.
Well, we did give them the option last time to either continue with the current systems or replace. We actually gave them the option, but we did only have one responsive bidder the last time that we put this out. I don't believe that's going to be the case this time. We've actually had multiple companies contact us in the past several months asking if we were going to be putting out an R and D any time in their future, so.
Have we done anything different that made, leads you to believe that they're going to be more responsive, or do you suspect there's people that are looking?
There are, there are more companies that actually are selling the systems that we currently have now than there were at the time, that we put it out last time. So I believe that the pool of people that would be accessible to us has increased by something.
All right, if there's no further questions, I'll read the motion one more time. Thank you, Josh. Entertain motion for staff to develop a request for proposal for a contract for monitoring, maintenance of the county's access control system, security, fire, alarm system, and camera system. This time, we'll call for a vote. District One, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Three, how do you vote?
Yes.
And District Four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I as Chairman vote yes. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion for our, for our in-frees on non-emergent positions with the county. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion with this?
Just like I say, I hate to have to do something like this, but I just don't have the chance to evaluate positions when they come up.
You know, this will not include the, because we said non-emergent. This will not include sheriff's, law enforcement officers, EMS staff, dispatchers, and detention center staff. Okay, we'll call for a vote. District One, how do you?
Yes. Excuse me, what about EMS, is that separate?
It does not include EMS, the hiring freeze. All right, any other questions? If not, we'll call for the vote. District One, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Four, how do you vote? And I as Chairman vote yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for council to go into executive session pursuant to section thirty dash four dash seventy, and two of the South Carolina Code of laws nineteen seventy-six as amended to discuss item one, Sheriff's Office and Detention Center personnel and work schedules. Item two, receive legal advice concerning the Building Code Department. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. District One, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District Four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I as Chairman vote yes. This time, we're in executive.